Meeting to order police stand for the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Are there any changes on the agenda or consent agendas? Yeah.
Consider agendas.
Wade made the motion to approve the regular and consent agendas. Holly seconded that. All those in favor? Okay, first on our agenda is recognitions and information. STEM programs at Fillmore and Central. Nice girl.
Well, we're hoping for some choir kiddos to show up tonight as well. We did a STEAM night over at Central, so we had our STEM creations that we do through Create to Think. That's our project-based learning. And then we put on an art show as well as our choir night. So I can show some examples, though. It just happened at the beginning of March, five to six. Like I said, we had our Create to Thinks. We had an art show with Mr. Paget, and then I was doing the choir. Our choir is with Fillmore and Central. So a quick thing of the Create to Think projects. That's our project-based learning. Each unit has vocabulary, a clear connection, reinforces those employability skills, also has some math and language art supplemental material. So here are our kindergarten and first graders, Create to Think projects hanging up in the walls. Kindergarten did, was it making a masterpiece? Or they had to create a paintbrush with two different sides, make thick and thin lines. First graders built a house to withstand the big bad wolf because they read Three Little Pigs. They had a certain set of supplies that they could use. Our second and third grade did Pet in the Clouds. They were about, learned about weather patterns. Third graders had to make a plant on continent X that had a certain climate and weather conditions that doesn't exist on our planet. So it was cold and wet, the animal, sorry, plant eating predators. And they had to come up with an entire new plant that would survive those conditions. Fourth grade did monster mashups where they worked with the pairing parents and what strong characteristics would come across when there are new monsters. So parent A, parent B, and which ones, based on like a roll of the dice, would come out. And then fifth grade, it was titled Common Sense, but they built bridges that had to hold so much weight. But that one, they tested to failure, like a lot of products are. So they put how much weight could it potentially hold? So in the end, they all ended up breaking. That was the goal of that one. Art show, Mr. Paget displayed this from all of our students from K-5 for the whole year that we are up to. There are some examples in the hallway. There was painting, watercolors, oil castles, sketches, kind of ran the gamut. And then our choir, they said it was Fillmore and Central students. We had about 25 this year. Practiced from March to January. Since our theme for this was STEAM, I tried to match our choir songs with that as well. So we sang like Radioactive and Mr. Roboto, I Can Fix You, Paint It Black, the math songs, which is a parody that One Direction did. Our big finale was Big Bang Theory. What was really kind of cool, our opener was a song that the students wrote themselves using AI. So I don't know if you would ever want to listen to it, but it was kind of neat. I gave them a prompt of why did you join choir? And they sent back a little post-it note, and that's what I typed in, and it bit out a song for us. We called it Choir spun to the 12th degree because that's how many times they wrote down why they liked choir. It's fun. There were other things, but then we also changed it because originally it was called Choir Together. And so we adjusted it to fit ours, make it more personal. So it's not just the computers. There's our kiddos. We also dressed up to fit STEAM. So I had scientists wearing their lab coats or PPE. Technology had like Jordi Star Trek, yep, Star Trek glasses on. Engineers had their safety vests and hard hats. Artists had their paint smogs. And mathematics had their clipboards and calculators. We also did a similar night at Fillmore. This was earlier in the year. This is our second time doing a grandparents STEAM night. We have nine stations that we'll go to. So there's the book fair. There's an egg drop. So they get the hands-on part of STEM, not just watching and looking at things. There are task cards at each station that explained it. Next year, I'd like to add in a career connection with those as well. There's some little fun facts, too, on the bottom of each of them. I know you can't read it, but... So this was the coding goat. The little mice has a directional pad, so they could put out the piece of cheese and then tell it to go forward, forward, right, right, and see if they could get to the prize the most effectively, most efficiently. Binary code bracelets. They could choose a letter from their name, write it out in zeros and ones, made it color-coded. Cup tower. You could only use the cups that were provided and place cards, index cards, no tape, no leaning it on the wall, see how tall you could get it. Lego building station. There are little task cards there that had just a variety of things. Make a rainbow, build a house, a dinosaur. If you were in the forest, make something that you would see. Our iRobot station, this one was also coding, but it used the devices. So you can use the code dot Borg, similar typing in Blockly on these iRobots that would then trace out the patterns that you put in there. They have a little function that also pulls up and down the pen. That's why there's the whiteboard mat, so they could draw out their codes. Circuit cards, building a circuit, use copper tape and LED lights and a battery. Spiro painting, these are also robotics, one that uses coding, or you could drive it with like a joystick. They have a silicone shell on it, so it can go into some liquids. So we put it through paint, and they could like make art with it, too. That was our standard STEAM nights.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so now we have our usual financial update, but just so board members know, Holly and I sort of followed up about the bid process, because we had some questions. And Dr. Penrod was very gracious to answer them. So we asked the board to explain it to all of us again. Okay, so.
Yep. So I'll just start just a brief overview. As you see in your board packets, you received the latest financial reports, which was all updated through the end of February of this year. All that included was the clean dockets, the payrolls, all of our cash flows, our transfers, all the fund reports. And as you continue to see in those reports, we're continuing to perform as forecasted regarding all of our income expenses and fund balances.
With that, Dr. Penrod, I will let you take over and that brief explanation of the public figures, of the public figures.
Good evening. Thank you. I appreciate you having me. So we did, we did have some discussion about, particularly about including local bidders in the bid for the, for the most recent project there. And what we, what we decided on the delivery method, the CM, which is MKS, the construction manager, we're going to, we were dealing with one single prime contract, and we did that. So whoever gets the bid would be, would be responsible for everything underneath that. And so there's another way to do it. You can, you can break out bid packages, and then the school holds a separate contract with each of those contractors. So if there are 14, 15, 20 different bid packages, you would have 20 different contracts with 20 different subs. And if somebody gets behind, and they're not meeting their, you know, their deadlines, then the other subs don't meet their deadlines, and there's a bunch of finger pointing about, you know, I'd be done with my trade, but you're not done with your trade, so I can't move on, and that kind of thing. And so a lot of times we have a lot of success with a single prime contractor is what it's called. And so we take all of the, all of the whole package, put it together, and then put it out for bids, and then one single prime contractor gets that based on the lowest responsive, responsive and responsible bid. But that person is responsible for going out to get, to get their own bids on the subs underneath. So a lot of times, a lot of times what we see on the bigger jobs like this, a larger construction company will come in with a low bid and then use the, use, use or not use the local contractors as far as the, the subcontractors under that large contract. And so in this case, we knew there was a sub, we knew it was going to be a single prime contract. So we went to MKS, the construction manager, and asked them to make sure that certain, certain local contractors were aware. And so what they did, they issued a thendum one, which addressed a lot of different things in the thendum one. You know, some of it were just simple, like change of table contents, delete bid package under this, under the single prime, delete the bid package 07A, headline 28, that kind of stuff. But in there, it also says that a prospective lower-tier bidder, and when I say lower tier, that does not mean lower quality or anything like that. It just means the single prime is tier one, and then tier two are the first level of subs, and the first, and then tier three would be the second level of subs and that kind of thing. So in this addition, they, they said that a prospective lower-tier bidder, see page two for a list of, for local, for list of, for list from local trades. And so there are some, there are some local businesses listed on there. One in particular that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. And so that's not by any means requiring the, the single prime contractor to reach out, but it is requesting that the single prime contractor reached out. And so if, sometimes, I won't speak for the contractor, but there's, there are many different factors leading into that. If they have their own, their own sub that they usually use on a certain packet, like electrical or concrete or whatever, they might stick with them. If they, if they, if they trust them, they do good work, that kind of thing. Because ultimately, the single prime is responsible. So if the single prime, if something goes wrong with electricity, the school, having only one contract, is going to only deal with that single prime contractor. And so it's really their, quote unquote, fault. And so even if the sub did it. So that's kind of, that's kind of the way that it went, the way that it got bid. So sometimes, local, local contractors, we didn't have a bid for that. You guys never advertised. Correct. We didn't advertise specifically for, say, electricity or concrete or plumbing or whatever. We just advertised for the, the single prime contract, and then each, each contractor was responsible for the prime subs.
Thank you, Dr.
No, you're welcome.
All right. Legislative update?
I will. Whole lot, down to roughly a month left in the long session. I'm just going to look at Senate Bill 146, increases teacher salary for, from 40,000 to 45,000, and increase the amount of state tuition support that school corporations must spend on future compensation from 62% to 65%. House Education Committee is also amending that bill that requires schools to offer teachers 20 days off pay per annual leave. ISBA supports that effort to elevate the teaching profession, but they're neutral on the bill, thinking that it will be challenging for schools to meet the goals given, the educational funding levels that are at the state's budget. Senate Bill 287 was amended to give candidates the option to declare a party, run as an independent, or run as nonpartisan. Seems like that was ongoing. There would be no primary in compensation for school board members. Could also increase. ISBA is asking that the language on political party affiliation remain as like a "may", so make it kind of optional to declare a party. That bill passed out of committee by eight to five votes this past Wednesday. And lastly, the big one that seems to be the, the brightest, look on the radar, Senate Bill 1, that Chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee put forward new property tax relief plan this past Wednesday, based on language originally introduced in House Bill 1402. One concept that bill includes is moving from homestead tax defections to homestead tax credits that homeowners could claim. The revenues reduction to public education would exceed $1 billion over six years. So there's still a lot of work to be done to kind of offset the loss of property tax revenues. So that'll be interesting to see how that unfolds.
Project update. Chuck Grambo from MKS. Thank you for being here again.
You're welcome. Enjoy this. Actually, today even more than most. And Ron took up some of my, some of my light work, so. And we have some, some good reports from the field. So first off, no injuries, no accidents, always the most important. On the fieldhouse, doing well with the footings, should be done early next week. And then the block work will be ongoing. If anybody notices out in, out in front of the school, you'll notice the, actually, the, the grand, grand walkway into the fieldhouse, the, the block has been set, at least, at least the width of it now is, it's something to see. So it'll be coming out of the ground. Pool work, starting, starting tomorrow. So that's exciting. We're going to get the drains worked after a decade and see, see where the water goes. It'll be exciting. We got some spear over here in the morning.
So Spear is doing all the work, I'm assuming?
And don't worry, we have contingency for pumping out the water if the, if the drains aren't enough to snuff. So that's, we'll have that going on. That'll be exciting. Some of the, some of the barricades will be coming down, the barricade on the inside of the pool, obviously. And we're going to, there'll be a little bit of action in the commons area tomorrow. We're going to do just a, a little bit of an alteration on the, on the divider, the plywood dividers we see now. Not going to take, take away any real, real commons area, but just going to make work inside go a little bit easier, get some, a little bit more square footage open for the guys, for the guys who are tools and everything. Going forward, we, on some, just, we'll have some roofing contractors this week, again, just again, over the commons area. Just, we had some storms over the weekend, showed some potential weak points in the roof above, in the area where the ripple roof is, we used to call it my high school, I'm not sure what it's called, the old main entrance. So we'll have that buttoned up as soon as possible. That'll be either tomorrow late or Friday morning. So, and excitement at the, at the football field. We finally have a gravel stop going in over at, over on the visitor's side, so we're not going to have some mystery gravel at every track meet. So that'll be exciting within the next, I would say within the next 30 days or so, everybody will see that. And then the PA system and lights, we got a walkthrough complete on the 11. And so, so we'll be ready to rock and roll for softball season. So what I have here, any questions?
When you say you're going to alter the commons, not take up much more than is already there, but to have more pool room, more room for them to work in the pool, is that anything you could, get a little more room on the pool deck or no?
It's not on that side. That, that whole, that whole, that whole part is gone. That's going to be gone, should be by Friday, that, that side of the divider. I'll talk about the divider inside. It'll be what you see when you come into the commons, the white, all the, all the white plywood. That's just going to, the shape is going to change because something needs to be, there needs to be a little bit of block work that goes on in the old, there'll be old locker room area that right now can't be accessed.
We have an idea of softball field that's like.
It's supposed to be done this week, according, according to Troy Burges. A gentleman from, I'm not sure what contractor he's from, he's, he's the school's field, infield guy. He did the baseball field, I believe, beginning of the week, but there was still some skidding water on the softball field. And so that pushed that till later this week. So I would think with any luck tomorrow, Friday, he's supposed to be here, but I can follow up with that and shoot you an email. I'm pretty sure it should be this week, is what I heard from Troy. Thanks, Emily. I appreciate it.
Public comment? New business, item seven. Consideration of 2024-25 Early Literacy Achievement Grant policy.
Yep. Back in December of 23, the Indiana Department of Education issued guidance related to the Early Literacy Achievement Grant, and they established that through House Riddle Act 1001-2023 to support the IDOE's statewide goal of ensuring 95% of Indiana's third grade students pass IREIT III by 2027. That appropriation was made to provide funding to schools for supplemental payment stipends for teachers, for improving students' foundational reading skills, which was evidenced and is evidenced by IREIT III data. So as required by the Indiana Department of Education, we are seeking approval of the policy found in your board packets to distribute the Early Literacy Grant funds to our teachers and instructional aides that qualify for the grant funds. Of note, this has been discussed with the Classroom Teachers Association and the building administrators as well.
So this is for this past school year?
This is for the results from last year, last spring.
I believe I have to abstain.
So you're abstaining? Okay. All right. A motion then, from either one of you two? Wade made the motion to approve the Early Literacy Grant policy. All those who abstained. Item B, consideration of cancellation of outstanding checks, Dr. Smith?
Yep. As per Board Policy 6470, which says all warrants or checks that are drawn on the funds of the school corporation that are outstanding and unpaid for a period of two years or more, as of the last day of December or of the year, are void and will not be honored by any financial institution for payment or deposit. Therefore, we are seeking the formal cancellation of the outstanding checks that are listed in your board packets that our treasurer will then put together for us.
I'm going to approve the cancellation of outstanding checks.
We made the motion to approve the cancellation of outstanding checks. Holly seconded that. All those in favor? Consideration of Fillmore Elementary LED upgrade.
As the last part of our LED deferred maintenance upgrades, that you've heard me talk a lot about lately, I'm asking for the approval of the Fillmore Elementary LED update project. This will complete our upgrades and provide significant energy savings in the process, and the enhanced functioning in the classroom will be very beneficial as well. And as you can see, even in this room and throughout the hallways, it's a dramatic difference between the before and after, and they're 55% more efficient than what we currently have.
I move to approve the Fillmore Elementary LED upgrade. Holly made the motion to approve the Fillmore Elementary LED upgrade. Lee seconded that. All those in favor? Item D, consideration of elementary STEM teacher positions.
As part of our STEM initiative throughout the district, we're asking for approval of the elementary STEM teacher position, as detailed in your board packets. A proposal has this position being filled with Ann Pruitt, who presented earlier this evening, and who has been piloting our elementary STEM Fridays at Fillmore Elementary, and she will help us on a road to our STEM certification of our schools and provide enhanced, hands-on learning experiences for all of our elementary students. And will also be helping in training staff in regards to STEM lessons and a STEM lab for many of the projects that teachers will bring students to. By fostering early exposure to STEM education, we're preparing our students for a future that increasingly demands technological proficiency and problem-solving skills. So tonight, we're just requesting the approval for this position and for Ann Pruitt to be that, in that position, to enhance our students' educational experiences and future successes.
Will she be like, when she goes to both class or both schools, is that as a special area teacher, or is she pushing in?
That will be as, go ahead, Joanna.
Yeah, will become part of the rotation. So right now, we have art, music, PE, computers, and then library. So we're taking away the library as a rotation, and then adding the library in throughout the day, but half the time. So right now, they go 45 minutes. And this is just for Central. So I'm not sure if Fillmore will be the same, but we're doing a 30-minute increment for teachers to sign up once a week to still go to the library. It just will not be part of the rooms.
So the, so the people that are doing the library, they're just being transferred to Media Center, or are they still there? Or are the teachers on their own when they go in?
So Mrs. Schlotter is kind, she's over our library, but she has an IATP. She's been there for years. And so they kind of tag team right now. Taminda does library two days a week, and then she lasts three days a week. And then Mrs. Schlotter does library one day a week, teaching it. So what it would look like next year is, yes, Taminda's, they will still be teaching the classes under the direction of Mrs. Schlotter. And then Mrs. Schlotter would have, like, her day of supervision, so to speak, the library, anything, all that, all that extra stuff that she does and chemistry, trying to get it done right now.
So the library time would be during class time? In other words, the teacher would be there with them when they?
They, they're still going to be in adult teaching in that, in that 25-minute, 30-minute segment. So let's say that when I was a kindergarten teacher, I would go to the libraries, the librarian would be in there, she would read stories, and I could check out books, or my team would check out books. I could be in there, I'd either run to the restroom, I'd run to the restroom, something like that. But that's what we envisioned, what it would look like next year. Thank you.
Okay. Questions or?
The transfer of Miss Pruitt from elementary music to the elementary STEM position.
Wade made the motion to approve the elementary STEM teacher position and the transfer of Ms. Rillitt from elementary music to the elementary STEM teacher position. Well, and Lee seconded it, right? By the time I got through all that, I didn't write it down. And Lee seconded that. All those in favor? All right, Superintendent, report.
Yep. So STEM's been a big focus this evening, obviously, but that's One Direction that we need to continue to provide best possibilities for our students' futures. We are continuing to look at future needs as well, and are working on building our capacities throughout the district in STEM, work-based experiences, and AI integration to prepare our students, staff for the world, that continues to change at speeds we have never seen. I appreciate the board's vision and understanding as we continue to learn and grow as a district towards this future, while also providing exceptional experiences and trajectories for our staff and students. So thank you for that. There are, in other news, there's many other exciting things that are happening throughout the district. We're going to continue to provide insights and overviews of those in upcoming meetings in April and beyond, just more highlights of things that are actually going on, that is really neat things happening as we continue to transition towards the new pathways and graduations and those types of things. So just wanted to give you a heads up that a lot will be coming to you in, in April. Spring break is next week, so I'm wishing everyone a safe and relaxing week. And lastly, I'd just like to share yet another video that's going to be hitting our website and social media starting when we return from spring break. So I'd just like to share that.
At South Butnam Community School Corporation, we're committed to preparing every student for a successful future. At South Putnam Community School Corporation, we're committed to preparing every student for a successful future. From the very start of their K-12 journey, students build a foundation for life beyond our house. In elementary school, students develop essential employability skills like work ethic, communication, and collaboration through joint efforts by teachers, special area instructors, and counselors. Real-world STEM education brings problem solving to life, setting a strong academic and social foundation. Middle school students expand on these skills with career-focused courses, seminars, and personal finance lessons, all aimed at readiness for high school and beyond. At South Putnam High School, students benefit from a robust early college program, allowing them to earn at least 15 college credits. 20% of seniors complete the Indiana College Core, securing at least 30 transferable credits to Indiana's public colleges. RAP and Ivy Tech dual enrollment programs offer additional opportunities for college-level learning and achievement. For students focused on the workforce, the Early College Curriculum, Career Internship Exploration Program, and Area 30 Career Center provide hands-on experience, professional skills, and industry-recognized certifications in fields like welding, computer networking, CNA, auto collision, and auto tech. With abundant support and pathways, South Putnam equips every student for college, career, and a fulfilling future.
Very excited to get all these videos launched and out on, into our social media channels and on the website. So a lot of neat things that are highlighting the things, the great things that are happening here. So.
Are you going to launch them all at one time or?
It'll be a very strategic deployment of media. There's 13 different videos that we'll be releasing and then we're working with another videographer right now to, to produce more.
If there's nothing else, we will enter.